Hello, sorry about that. Hello and good afternoon. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special workshop meeting, January 29th, 2025, at 3:00 PM on Wednesday. With that, it is 3:06. We do have a quorum with Councilman Donaldson, Councilwoman Fox, and myself. I'd also like to recognize that we have Jeff Angelo here, President of our MEDC, Ryan Lundeen on our MEDC, John Fox on our P&amp;Z. If there's other members that come in, I'd like to announce them when they get here. With that, Mr. Donaldson has requested that we do a short prayer and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you might, please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another opportunity to learn and grow. We thank you, Father, that we're going to receive ideas, concepts, and insights, Father, that will help the city of Montgomery, Father, to better plan our future. We thank you for this day, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance with the flags that are behind us, we'll start with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Did not receive anything, any forms that anyone from the public would like to speak at this time, so we'll move on to the workshop agenda. Item number three on your agenda, Discussion, Coordination, Alignment and Collaboration Workshop with Status Updates from Kendi Keast Collaborative, Retail Strategies, and Aradura Kim Lee Horn. Who will be going first? Okay, KK C., thank you.
Please be with all of you. Since we met last month and went over some of the interim regulations, just as a reminder for everybody, when we prepared the contract and scope of work for this project, we decided that there were probably several regulations that needed to be addressed sooner than later just because of the pace of development, and those were identified in our, in our scope. And so we've been working on those since we met last time. We've spent more time particularly on the downtown area, making sure that they are right-sized for the community and they will deliver the type of development that you would expect in downtown. So, all the standards.
But can you state your names of the writers?
Yes, certainly. I'm Brett Keast, CEO, owner of Kendi Keast Collaborative in Sugar Land, Texas. So I was going to give you a kind of an overview of where we stand on this. Let the scout know this. Oh, there we go. Just got to skip over that. So there were, doesn't seem like the remote is working. There we go. There were several different components of this. There's the Future Langies Plan, which has not yet been done. We did the Mobility Plan first. We actually have a, an updated version on the wall over here. I'll be talking about that a little bit later, or commonly referred to as a Future Street Plan. The Future Langies Plan will basically be a color-coded map that will identify the type, scale, and density of future development throughout the city and its planning area. That will be what's used to make any rezoning decisions. We already did the Illustrated Master Concept Plan, that many of you participated in, in that, we had that on display at the last meeting. And then we're working on the interim ordinance updates, and we're also working on the full Unified Development Ordinance. These are the chapters from your current Code of Ordinances that will be included in whole or in part in the Unified Development Ordinance. The goal of the UDO is basically to bring all development-related regulations under single cover, have them all in one place with everything cross-referenced, so anybody that is developing would be able to go to one document and find all those, and they will be consistent within and between each of those different topics. There we go. These are the interim amendments. I'll be focusing more on some than others. For the R2 district, really all we did was for apartments is we required that they get a special use permit, meaning that they're not just permitted outright in that district. Part of the reason is to make sure that we can get some standards in place so that we get, you know, apartment developments of good quality and well-designed and will sustain in the community. Plan development, we know that that section expired, and so we've written some standards for that, so should there be any planned developments that come in, in the meantime, there will be some guidance there. Ultimately, with the UDO, I would hope that a planned development is not necessary. We should be able to do everything that you can do within planned development within the districts that we will outline within the development ordinance. Plan developments can sometimes be, take a lot of time, a lot of back and forth, they can cost a lot of money from engineers' perspective, and there's a really open-ended, a lot of it's very discretionary, so you don't really have set standards. So we'll be establishing very clear standards that will be used. The downtown, we'll be talking about, the historic preservation standards, we really haven't changed too much of them substantively. The primary things we did there was to cross-reference the DT or the Downtown District. There's quite a few pieces, oh, we got the design guidelines that'll be going over for the downtown. And then subdivisions. Regarding the thoroughfare plan, we have some standards in there saying that if a subdivision comes in, that their street system needs to be consistent with or substantially in conformance with the street plan. It doesn't need to exactly follow that, but we need to make sure that we're building a street network that serves the entire community, not development by development. So we have through streets that connect between developments and from there out to collector roadways and to arterial roadways. So you'll see those, I'm happy to answer any questions about that as well. Open space requirements, we've got some standards related to who owns them, who's responsible for maintaining them, and then also ultimately, we'll want to have standards in your ordinance that will reward people who set aside open space, who preserve stands of trees and low-lying areas and create greenways and trails and things like that, and we could reward them by giving them density bonuses or extra density. But we want to say not every unbuilt land necessarily qualifies as open space if it's really unusable, so a certain percentage of it needs to be usable, not just, you know, land that floods all the time or is not accessible. And then sidewalks, we talked about that requiring tree preservation, and then there's some landscaping that's associated with the perimeter fences and walls. R2, I pretty much talked about that. It's really, the only thing we did was make a special use permit for apartments. That will go away ultimately when we get the Unified Development Ordinance complete and we've got good standards. Plan development, we kind of spelled out the purpose statement for it. It's intended to be of a higher standard. A lot of times, they've been viewed as a way to skirt the regulations and to provide lesser standards, but we want to make sure that there's a good quality standard that's held with them, that cannot circum, otherwise circumvent the development regulations. And ultimately, we will have very specific standards as to building types and development types and densities and open spaces and setbacks and all those types of things to help guide any development so that it's consistent across the city. Downtown, this is where we spent most time since our last meeting. We're using the boundaries from the Downtown Master Plan, and I'll show you here in a second. Pretty much, the Historic Preservation District covers the same territory with the exception of a couple properties, but ultimately, if we're going to want to kind of align those and clean those up, some of them are on the nor, appear to be on the north side of 105, some are on the south side of 105, and they, they just don't align with one another right now, so we can certainly clean those up. We've identified, there's a use matrix or a table in there that identifies the types of commercial uses that you would expect to see in downtown and those that you wouldn't want in a walkable historic downtown. We provide for event venues with some standards to make sure that they don't overrun things with, you know, some hours of operation and things of that, of that nature. Artisanal manufacturing would be small-scale, say somebody can make candles or make some other type of home good or something, that could potentially happen, it wouldn't be large-scale, it's 2,000 square feet or less. So this is the boundary of what we're calling the Downtown Zoning District. This aligns with your Downtown Master Plan. So the zoning map will need to be updated to reflect this boundary. As I think you know, you only have one commercial district across the city right now, so downtown is not, doesn't have its own unique standards, so that's what we're accomplishing with this. And then this will show you the Historic Preservation Boundary. So you can see it closely aligns with some of it. The good part about that is, is that our state legislature limited what communities in Texas are able to do relative to building materials. So a lot of cities used to require masonry and used to require certain roof types and stuff. The state legislature said you can no longer do that. However, if it is an area of historic significance, then you can. So the benefit of this, by having most of all of the Downtown Zoning District also within the Historic Preservation, is that gives us the ability to have a little more regulation to ensure that we're getting things that are of historic character and that work well within the downtown area. Ultimately, we'll want to kind of clean up the boundaries where, where we can, and I know there's been discussion about possibly expanding the downtown district, so we can certainly have those conversations as well, just not at this interim regulation point. And then these are different street types, and we've tied the street types to the regulations. So 105, Eva Street, that segment of it, we're calling Type A, and there are certain standards that would be associated along that corridor on the north, for all properties that abut the right-of-way on the north and south sides. The blue are the Type B streets, basically the core walkable area of downtown, and then the green streets are C, kind of the peripheral streets where you're interfacing between commercial and residential of the neighborhoods. So we refer to those in the regulations. So here you see a table that has your Type A, B, C, and D, the lot areas, lot widths. In many cases, these pre-exist zoning, so we've just said there's none, because as soon as you create one, some lot will be less than that, and we'll have to create extra process. In downtown, basically two stories along 105, particularly going west along the Heritage Plaza, we're allowing those to go to three stories like those buildings are already. And then bringing buildings to the street, so we don't want to line 105 with parking lots that are unsightly. We would prefer, like the Heritage Buildings, that the parking is to the side or preferably even in the rear, so that we can have a nice frontage along that roadway with sidewalks that's actually passable. And so those are the standards that apply to those different areas. And then we have illustrations that you see there that basically show A, B, C, D, they correspond with the table that show what is a front setback, what's side, a corner setback versus an interior side when there's not a street, building height, how that's measured, so forth and so on. And this is basically wanting streets that are built toward the street, but not, you know, 120-foot a building that's all built. You want to have some jogs and some interest in it. So that is basically called a frontage requirement, so a certain portion of that building needs to be brought to the street, but not every portion of that. So as you have now, you can have, you know, breezeways and breaks in the building massing for access and, you know, other shorter buildings and things like that that creates a little bit of visual interest, so we don't just get these big blockses. So they've done a very nice job with those two buildings that are there now. The sign regulations, we've spelled out in the downtown core, the allowed sign types. So you could have a sign on an awning or on a canopy, it can be hung underneath of a canopy. You can have one on a wall sign, you can have them projecting out, you pretty much have most of these types somewhere in downtown right now. So we're wanting them to be downtown-type signs that are of the appropriate scale and work well in downtown. You can have A-frame signs on a temporary basis, so if somebody has, you know, a tea at 2:00 or a sale or something, they can put out a temporary sign and take it back in. So we're trying to allow businesses to do what they do, but without, you know, big, oversized, overly lit signs that aren't appropriate in a historic character. And then these are the sign types that are prohibited. One on top of the roof, a cabinet sign where the whole thing is lit up, and it's a cabinet that sits out from the wall. A pole sign, an electronic messaging center where you can have either digital messaging, we wouldn't want that, as well as a pylon sign. Some of these will be perfectly appropriate elsewhere in town, just not in downtown.
And when you say manual, the manual changeable copy, is that a sign that may be hanging with, that's on vinyl?
Yeah, where they put, they could put the letters in.
Yeah, okay.
They, we can allow that, but what we don't want is any, you know, traveling messages or any, any animation or things blinking or anything like that on an electronic messaging center. We'll need to talk about that, you know, elsewhere. Some communities have said we don't want electronic signs anywhere in the community. Others have said they're okay if they're of a certain size and we don't allow the message to continue to scroll, we don't have fireworks and, you know, things that are capturing attention. So we'll talk about that. But yeah, we can have a, a sign with manual letters that people could put in. And sometimes, cities will even go to the point of saying, I think we say, all letters have to be the same color, so you can't do rainbows and all sorts of crazy things.
Thank you.
This is parking, there's some graphics there that I think help to understand. You know, along 105, we would like to see parking to the rear of buildings rather than being out along 105. That one in the middle where we've got parking in front is prohibited in this instance. Obviously, in downtown, a lot of the parcels are too small to have onsite parking, so they're going to be either parking on-street or in some of the common lots that you have currently. With the new design, looks like there's going to be some diagonal parking on, on that street, so with the redesign of some of the downtown streets, you could pick up some public parking there.
So I, sorry, on the front parking, I know that there's two businesses on 149 that have front parking, and that's the only parking they have. How would that be addressed?
Well, I mean, they, they're pre-existing, right? So they're going to be grandfathered. This would be basically going forward after these are adopted. Anybody that comes in, when they bring in their site plan, we'd be looking at it to make sure, you know, how they're going to take access, how they're going to have circulation onsite, where the parking is relative to the building, making sure they have handicap parking to meet ADA requirements, and that it's screened and things like that.
Thank you.
So my understanding, though, on parking, that a lot of it has to do with the employees and the prospective customers.
Yes.
So we're not necessarily going to base the parking space just on the square footage, are we? Because they got to have room to park their employees also, right?
Oftentimes, in your ordinances this way, you have parking ratios that will say typical is like one space per, or four spaces per thousand square feet for retail, or five spaces per thousand square feet. But when you have, you know, some type of businesses, it may stay one space for each full-time employee plus, you know, per square foot, or it could be based on number of seats, or it could be based on number of bedrooms or beds in a, in a hospital. So there's a lot of different ways you go about calculating those. The big thing that we've seen nationally is that cities are starting to do maximum parking ratios rather than minimum, so that your Kroger, your Home Depots and stuff don't have large, you know, 60, 70% open parking for, you know, 350 days a year, and during Christmas and holiday season, you know, it gets full. They're concerned about runoff, they're concerned about heat, they're concerned about aesthetic. So many communities are starting to say, well, we can have a minimum, but we also have a maximum that's only a certain percentage over, so that we don't basically pave the whole countryside. And most of your national franchises have their own standards, they will commonly exceed city standards, but cities are saying, you know, we're setting a maximum. So we'll have more conversation about that.
Right.
But yeah, you will see a lot of different ways that parking will be calculated depending upon the use. Also, the thing we want to look at is where driveways are, how many driveways there are, and sharing driveways where we can, and then having cross-access between sites, so that somebody doesn't have to go out one site, go out on the road and back into the next site, so that you have driveways that connect them, so as people bring individual, we'll stub out a street, so the next guy, when it develops, they can tie into that. And so people can move up and down without having to jump back out onto 105 and go two doors down and pull back in, just to avoid all that congestion and opportunity for accident. Yep. So that's called shared and cross-access agreements, so we'll be including that in there as well. We want traffic to move freely and without so many conflict points, the more driveways you have, it just bogs down, just like I was in coming over here. Landscaping, we have amenity spaces, and so we're identifying, you know, you can have a plaza, or a courtyard, or a passeo, or even a vegetable garden. And as I was looking around downtown, you actually have some of these little spaces. Some of them are maybe a little more informal than these here, but it's important that we have, you know, places for people to hang out, to have coffee outdoors, to talk, to visit, to gather, things like that. So that'll be important going forward, not only in downtown, but, you know, elsewhere across the community. And this is to show that some of the standards that we wrote, things are already being built. So we're not bringing in things that are off the wall that nobody could possibly meet, right? So this, obviously, you know the building, but it's got a brick front, it's got recessed windows and a recessed entry, it comes out to the sidewalk, you have sills on the windows, you have a cornice across the top, you have an adjustment in the height. It's those types of things so that we don't just get square boxes, right? Most of the time, new regulations would require that side elevation that you see there, that's metal, would require that that front be wrapped around the corner, say 20% of the depth or something like that, so that you'll see, you'll see the brick on the front, on the front facade and then wrap each side. In downtowns, oftentimes, and in shopping centers, we have out parcels, a lot of times you will require 360-degree architecture, because somebody's looking at the back and the sides, you know, when you're, when you're at the, at the main anchor, whether it's Home Depot or whoever it is, then you have fast food and gas stations out front, and if the back end is metal, then everybody that's visiting, you know, Home Depot is looking at the back of that. So we can talk more about that, too. And then having shading devices, you have a lot of these around downtown. On rainy days, it's nice to be able to walk under awnings and canopies and arcades, galleries, so those are all encouraged in downtown, and a lot of those play into the, the era of development and the historic nature of that area. So we've got standards for those that they need to be of a certain height and so far out, so they're passable. And I don't know, I'd maybe have to talk with Chris about where the right-of-way is relative to the front of these buildings. Sometimes in downtowns, it's like right at the front of the building, and so if you do anything, you're encroaching into the right-of-way.
Right.
So we have some standards in there about encroachments. So they're permitted, but there are standards to make sure that they don't interfere with traffic operations or anything like that. This is along 105. Obviously, it's, it's, I'm calling it a kind of a gateway to downtown. It's not of the same historic nature as downtown with the size of the buildings and so forth. This is a beautiful building, and they've done all the things that you would want to do by breaking up a large building into modules, having building stepbacks, using different materials, different heights, using some awnings, using some canopies, different window shapes, so it creates, you know, a very attractive and very interesting street scape. So up and down along 105, anything else that comes in, doesn't have to be three stories, obviously, but there are certain rules to make sure that you're carrying that type of appearance up and down that corridor, so you don't have these beautiful buildings and right next to it, a metal, a metal shed. So there, that's the standards that you see there, kind of the standards that are included in there. This is a picture of the thoroughfare plan. You've got your major roadways, but what's important is, I was really surprised frankly when Chris sent me the image that shows all the developments that are starting to come in, I had no idea, even though I drive around here all the time, that we tie them all together, so you can go from one neighborhood through the next neighborhood to the park or to the school, that we don't have, you know, circular or discontinuous roadways that don't lead anywhere, or that you have a subdivision and just an internal roadway, then you have to go out and go into the next subdivision to get to your friend's house, or for your kid to walk to school. So what this is, is there's, the red are the major arterials, those would be the highest traffic volume, the widest street sections, the most lanes, and then you drop down to blue, which would be a secondary arterial, a little narrower and less, you know, less capacity but still continuous. And then you get down into the green, and those are at the collector level. We looked at the county's thoroughfare plan to make sure that we're syncing up with what they're doing. We'll have to coordinate with them in some of the areas outside the city limits. But with your platting authority outside the city limits, you have the ability to, you know, look at the thoroughfares, too. So that's what we're seeing. If somebody's coming in and building a large piece of property, want to make sure that they're, the alignment can change depending on their design, but we want a street that kind of goes all the way through and connects with the next one and goes on to the arterial, rather than having them mismatch or having dead ends. You've got some good examples, and that just naturally happens when things happen incrementally over years and years, if somebody's not watching it from a bird's-eye view. So here's a good example of a part of town, we're actually in this part of town. No, we're not. But a lot of subdivisions, very nice subdivisions, but the street system is just disconnected, there's lots of cul-de-sacs, you can't get from one to the other. So school buses and mail carriers and bicycles and stuff have hard time, you know, accessing green spaces and so forth. So in a perfect world, we would have wanted some type of, you know, collector roadway through that area, and then you can have your pods of development, but be built into more of a, a continuous roadway network. And then there's individual cross-sections that are up and down the sides of this image that will show, in this case, along the top, it's showing what a major arterial could look like. Well, we don't necessarily want 105 where we have five lanes, all wide with shoulders, that's unsightly and just cars turning every which way. So as we're building new streets in areas that are developing, we'd like to have boulevard sections so we can control where the turns are into shared access points, and then people could access off of the roadways. And you can either have a boulevard, or you can have a very wide median, so if there's a timbered area and you want to keep all those trees, you can do a very wide median and preserve those. Or we can do a parkway where you basically set the roads to the side, and then you have a very wide open space on one side, and you can have sidewalks and trails and things of that along those, those roadways. And then we have a cross-section for each of the other road types as well. Some of those you may be constructing, some of those you may be constructing with a county or a developer may be participating, but you need to have a consistent standard so that all the roadways match up with one another, and we have rights of way for allowing for turn lanes and stuff like that over time, instead of having to go out and acquire right-of-way after the fact. Cul-de-sacs, very popular. People love them because of, you know, their privacy. However, particularly around here, when we have hurricanes and flooding and so forth, most communities have a maximum length of a cul-de-sac that's 600, maybe 800 feet. This one that I'm showing here is 2,300, like a half-mile long. And if, you know, a tree falls over that or a part of it's flooded, the people at the back, they're not going anywhere, and they're stuck.
Right.
And that's happened a lot with some of our floods, maybe you've seen that. But I've showed an example of what a 450-foot-long cul-de-sac looks like, and as well as a 750, so you can kind of get a scale. So cul-de-sacs are fine as long as you still have continuous roadways to connect between neighborhoods and provided that they're not too long. Some of them will have a median in the middle, that's fine, they just have to have a bigger radius so that fire trucks and other apparatus can maneuver in there and not have to back the full width or the full length of that street. So all those standards will be So all those standards will be included. Sidewalks, I don't know where the utilities are, probably along the street. A lot of communities do street trees and put utilities elsewhere. But just having sidewalks on each side of the street is significant. And a lot of these things, I imagine people are saying, geez, the dollar signs are counting up, right? We consider that and we look at, right now, your districts are 9,000 square feet. Your lots are. People are building smaller lots and that. The way we structure this is that we reward them. So we say, if we want you to provide a green space or a trail, that's money. However, we can give you more density so you can get, sell more lots. So there's kind of a balancing act in there. So we are trying to reward them if we're, you know, asking for improvements just so we don't ratchet up the housing costs. So we're trying to be very conscientious of, if we're asking for something, to give something in return in terms of infrastructure. And then having open space. Most communities have a parkland dedication requirement. It usually works out to one acre about every 70 lots or so. And then there's also a fee in lieu of dedication. So if there's already an existing park and we don't want another park right next door, they can just dedicate a fee. We have not written that yet, so we'll be talking to you if that's something that you want to do. Because at this early stage of development, you want to make sure that your park system is also coordinated. So it's not, you know, if ultimately it ends up in the city's hands at some point, first, we need to make sure they're maintained and taken care of, and there's an instrument to do that. And then we also want to think about the overall park system ultimately in the city. So you have generally a green space within 1,000 feet of every resident in town. And then fences and walls. With a subdivision, you would want the subdivider to build the wall at the time that they construct the subdivision, which you're seeing happening. In some instances, it's each individual lot has their own fence. And some are six foot, some are five foot, some are, you know, chain link, some are wood, and it becomes very unsightly. So we've got requirements in there. They have to do subdivision fencing. My question to you is, there are several different examples of different materials from composite to masonry to, to wood. Do you want to allow 100% wood streets along your major roadways? Or would you want to require like a masonry column every so often? That's going to be a question. Right now, we say it can be of masonry, it can be of wood, it can be of wrought iron, it can be of a composite material. But want to make sure that what's constructed meets what you're hoping to, to realize out of these. So something we'll need input on ultimately. And that is kind of the overview. Again, these are interim. We wrote them with track changes within your current ordinance. So they're ready for, when you're ready to adopt, they are already in a form that you just put an ordinance on top of them and they can be adopted. It's your current ordinances with some add-ons. And then the new ordinance, we'll be organizing it much differently, having a lot more graphics. It'll be web-based, so you can browse around it a lot easier. And it'll be organized in a way that's more intuitive for somebody that you won't have bits and pieces that are strewn all throughout different chapters and not know where they are.
It's not going to come up. One of the things that I see that was, to me, that was missing for the downtown area was enclosed trash receptacles.
Okay.
And I think I may, I was real adamant about the fact that I am very opposed to having
dumpsters.
Those very attractive, just dumpsters out in the middle of the road, especially on 149.
We do have that.
Where are you addressing that at?
That is in the, there are design standards for non-residential and mixed-use developments. And there is standards in there that would require that you have an enclosure that's of a, you know, five or six foot height. And most of the time, they're required to have gates on the front of them so you don't look at the rusted, dented up.
I'm primarily probably as, just as concerned about the downtown area as I am the others downtown also.
I will make sure that, that either we cross-reference those standards so you know where they're at or we'll add something into the downtown standards.
Yeah, I like very specific ones about, you know, the businesses specifically.
Ms. Fox, I'm meeting with the downtown businesses tomorrow, and I'm actually start, going to have a trash survey that we're going to send out to find out if we can have a couple of city-sponsored areas that the businesses can take their trash to and have twice-a-week trash pickup. Actually, Waste Management was at our meeting last night and we spoke afterwards. I'll be more than happy to get with you. But I, too, have taken some pictures of our downtown. And when you have trash sitting out on the ground and all around where there's foot traffic, it's not very attractive. So it is a priority to get that picked up and cleaned up. And that's something that I hope that we can get done quickly. So just so you know that there's some movement on that.
I'm glad to hear that because in downtown, usually you have centralized garbage. Not every lot has, or not every business has one, right?
And it's very successful. I have met with some businesses in downtown Conroe, and there's been quite a few studies. And they, they were not happy with having to trek a little bit of ways, but at the same time, they've gotten used to it and they appreciate it. So.
It's better, better than then actually paying and having that installed. I understand that that's an expensive endeavor when, when the businesses go in. But I think overall, I think that it's, it's very needed in downtown Montgomery.
I do have a question. I heard you say that the interim ordinances, which have been something that have been a priority to us since we started working with you, that they're ready to go. Chris, are we ready to go? Alan, are we ready to go on that? Because if you look at our development map, the one that you showed last night, there were 16 developments between residential and commercial happening, and we're used to four or five. We need to get ahead of this before that ship has sailed. So where are we?
I can't speak for Alan, but I think that probably your second, so with the, your second February meeting that both of us could have reviewed, provided comments and have it for action. Your first February meeting, just with meeting schedules, I think is too tight. But your one on the 25th, I believe it is, I think you can get in front of y'all.
Can, so then can we ensure we don't approve any development agreements? Approve any plaits, approve anything between now and then?
I'll kick it over to Alan on terms of kind of from approval to when they're adopted and kind of what's grandfathered and what's not.
Because that was one of our main priorities, why we, to get our arms wrapped around all of this growth is to have those interim ordinances. And I realize there's been a change in administration, but it's, I feel like we're a little bit behind the ball. I'd like to get caught up if possible.
So for sure, you don't have to approve any development agreements. Those are discretionary.
Okay.
If somebody files a plat application that meets the existing requirements, however, you do have to process it in terms with the existing requirements at the time filed.
So that's why I was asking, when are we going to get these interim ordinances in place so we can have interim ordinances in place?
Yeah, I think we can get that.
To address what we don't have today that we need in place.
Yeah, we can, we can get that.
So we're looking at the end of February?
February.
Thank you.
That's good because we'll be submitting you a schedule for each of the subsequent pieces that are coming. So we were wanting to know when that would be done so we can start scheduling out all the other portions that we'll be drafting.
I just hope we don't have an influx of plaits coming in between now and then. Because it's going to defeat the purpose of this whole entire exercise. And to be clear, it was not on y'all, so.
Thank you.
To be clear, thank you. Very good.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, Retail Strategies. I believe we have Jeremy Murdock on. Before we get there, I just want to, Ms. Bevan, I want to make sure that we recognize some other members that have come in for the record. Wade Nelson on MEDC, Arnette Easley on MEDC, Bill Simpson, Commissioner P&amp;Z, and Dan Walker, P&amp;Z, and John Fox, I mentioned him earlier. And I also felt to mention everybody that we had in the, in the room today because it was on the agenda that I saw here, but not on this. So we have Secretary Ruby Bevan, Ms. Diana Titus, Deputy Secretary Chris Rosnoff with WGA. We have Alan Petroff with Johnson Petroff. We have Caleb, Gloria, I was thinking Venezuela, sorry. Johnson Petroff. And then we have Chief Solomon, Ms. Tilly. We have Zach with WGA. We have Lieutenant Bill Mars. We have Stephanie Johnson with Economic Development. And Rick Hannah, our building official.
Thank you.
All right, all yours, Jeremy.
All right, thank you very much and hello, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. I'm Jeremy Murdock. I'm the Community Development Specialist with our Downtown Strategies team at Retail Strategies. Also have my colleague Laura Moreno's listening in. She's a colleague of mine on the downtown team as well. Our partnership with Montgomery is actually a two-part partnership. Going to be focusing on the downtown portion tonight, but I just wanted to clarify that there are two different teams with Retail Strategies working with Montgomery. One is focused on retail recruitment, which is really focused on national retail recruitment, looking at your highway corridors, commercial corridors and things like that, mainly outside of the downtown area, working to connect the dots with properties and filling vacancies and activating properties and connecting the dots with national and regional retail brands. So that's one team. I'm here representing the Downtown Strategies team, which is specifically focused on downtown Montgomery. So just wanted to clarify that there are two different parts to our partnership. The, the retail recruitment's focused more citywide. The downtown partnership is zoomed in on the downtown area. And our scope and the, the work that we do at Downtown Strategies is a little bit different than the other things you're going to hear tonight. We are much more short-term focused. We are looking at a five-year timeframe. So what can be done in downtown Montgomery over the next five years to enhance the vibrancy, make progress towards some of these longer-term goals and projects that you have in mind and things like that? So the things that you're going to see out of our work is much more practical, tactical, project-based recommendations. So it's the development of a five-year strategic action plan as well as implementation support. So this is a three-year partnership. Year one is focused on, mainly on the development of that, that strategic action plan. And then what we call implementation jumpstart, where we're trying to get a jumpstart on some of the strategies from the plan. Then years two and three will focus solely on that implementation support. We have a lot of tools and processes we go through to help generate action in the downtown area. So that's where we're going in the future. We have done this work in other communities to where we are working alongside these other planning firms like we're hearing from tonight. So I feel like it's a really good collaboration. It can flow really well together and actually complement each other. You're setting the stage for the long-term, big-picture plans like the streetscape plan and master plan you're going to hear about. You're setting the foundation with the, the code rewrite. And then our plan comes in with more of the immediate tactical things that you can do in the meantime, while you're gathering the resources for these longer-term projects. We did something very similar in Clayton, North Carolina, to where we were working alongside a master planning firm. And that's a good example because we are probably two and a half years into that partnership, and they're still finalizing the details of that master plan. And we're in the middle of year two of implementation of actually getting some of those short-term things done while they're, you know, finalizing the longer-term plan. So I think these can complement each other very, very well. Another thing is the, the turnover and some of the changes there locally has really not disrupted our process at all. It was a really good time for us of where we were in our process, but it really hasn't disrupted us at all. We're still on track with our original timeline and process that I'll go over with you in a second. The biggest change was just a new point of contact. And we were able to set that up at the beginning of the year. So I feel like we're in a really good place with our partnership and our process. So I provided a PDF, I think it was distributed to you all via email, that went through our whole partnership, retail recruitment and downtown. I'm just going to zip to our work with the downtown team to focus on that. Our process goes through three main phases in that first year. The first phase is the discovery phase where we're trying to learn about your community. We want to know about any past plans that have been done, which you guys have, have had some in the past, any current planning efforts that we're obviously talking about tonight. And just learn about Montgomery and the current conditions there. So that's really the phase that we're wrapping up right now. I'll go into more detail about that in a second. The second phase is that strategic planning phase where our team is actually formulating that strategic action plan. That's what we're shifting into right now. Then that third phase toward the end of this first year will be the implementation jumpstart that I mentioned. We'll all work with the, the core team to really get a plan for, okay, how are we going to mobilize, engage other downtown stakeholders and start to take action on some of these initial early projects? So the discovery phase, what did that entail? We started back in August of 2024, so when the contract was signed. We had a kickoff call that really walked through what our process looked like, our timeline, all those details. One of my colleagues, Jen Gregory, actually had a call with the Ken DeKeese team just to make sure that we understood their scope and how that might impact the work that we do. So we had that in October. And then in November, I actually got to meet a lot of you. Where I came into, into town in Montgomery, facilitated what we call our strategic visioning workshop, where I met with a small group of individuals, had a walking tour, and then had a more public input session that I believe a lot of you attended. Really well-attended meeting, was able to gather a lot of input there that will go into the recommendations that we make. So now that we are shifting into the development of that strategic plan, our team is getting together and really forming, okay, based on what we heard, based on the observations that we made, what are the strategic action items, strategic strategies and things that we need to recommend for downtown Montgomery? And we really force ourselves to not throw 300 ideas at you. This is not an idea generation exercise for us. We're trying to whittle that down to, okay, what are the, the things that you should focus on over the next five years? Where do you need to put your attention over the next five years in downtown? Really focused on those really practical things that are within the resources that you have right now while you're working toward these longer-term projects. So we call our, our plan a bite-sized plan. So we're trying to take these big-picture ideas. We'll even look at the plans that are going on for the streetscape and these other things. Okay, while we're working toward that perfect version of that, what are some things we could do right now that will set the stage for that and flow directly into those longer-term plans? So we're excited to really see what some of the other recommendations are so that we can identify, okay, what are some short-term ways that we can start working toward that now? The next big step for our team will be to present the market analysis presentation, which is scheduled for the end of February. That'll go over the data, really more of a retail-focused data than probably what you're seeing in some of the other work, truly more retail-centric. And you'll get a lot of that from the retail recruitment team as well. So looking at the retail market and how does that impact the work we're going to do. And then we're set to present a draft of the strategic action plan to the smaller core team, internal core team in April. And then they'll have a chance to review it, refine it, and then we'll determine the best way to, to really roll that out. So that's the next steps will be market analysis in February, plan presentation in April. And then we'll give a, a few weeks to review that document, but then we're going to immediately roll into implementation and start talking about where are we going to start and how can we facilitate that and set up some processes and structure to help with that process, to get some things going. So we're looking roughly February through April, that strategic planning phase. May through July will be that implementation jumpstart to really wrap up that initial year of the partnership before we roll into year two. So that's a high-level view of where we've been and where we're going. Does anybody have any specific questions about any of that? Okay, I, I want, this is a side note. I definitely commend you all for being so proactive with all this. I know this can get overwhelming at times, but I can speak from a personal experience. The county that I grew up in was one of the fastest-growing counties in the country in the late 90s and early 2000s. And it was a, a town that started about your size and is now like 20,000 people. And so I know you, a lot of people still view. And so I know a lot of people still view yourself as a small town in Montgomery. But fast forward five, 10, 15 years, things can change quickly. And so a lot of cities just wait until they're really in the midst of all the chaos before they try to do things like this. And so I definitely commend you for being proactive on this and really getting your house in order before you're just in the middle of tremendous boom. So kudos to you all.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. Just from my understanding, so in February, when we had that last meeting with you in October, that February market analysis, you're going to put together a presentation of what you heard in that and kind of how you would tackle that feedback and idea from the October presentation?
So the market analysis will be just on data. So I'll be looking at the retail market and the market analysis data that we pull. It'll be similar to what you're hearing from the reach recruitment team, but we'll relate that to how that impacts downtown and our plan with downtown. So that's what will be in February. And then the actual recommendations and things, the draft version of that, will be in April.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Aridura.
Hi, how are you? Hi there.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Sharath Venavelli. I'm with Aridura, formerly Gunda Corporation. We are here to discuss about McCallan Street Improvement Project, which is part of the downtown. And with me is Jim Patterson with Kim Lee-Hawn. He's an architect who also was part of the master plan development for the downtown district. So we had hit multiple hiccups on this project with changes with the staff and also some directions that we wanted. So we put together an initial conceptual phase, how we want to do it. The direction that we are heading is to make the McCallan Street one-way street, heading towards the College Street. And the key amenity or the key improvement of this project is going to be a pedestrian plaza in the middle of the paving. And probably, I think it's part of the package where we could scroll up and we can probably show you how it's going to look. It's a conceptual phase. It's not finalized. Probably it's in the last sheet if you can scroll it down. On the agenda, it should be in the last sheet. So this is something that Jim has put together for us to see how it's going to look. So Jim, if you want to explain what we're trying to do.
Sure. Thank you. Happy to be with you today. We have two drawings. This one is an overall. Why don't we start with that lower one, please, that shows the overall project limits as it was set out for us, going from Caroline, goodness, I've forgotten my street names, north up to the College. Thank you. And as Sharath mentioned, it will intended to be one-way, northbound. And then at the, kind of the middle of the block, there would be a pedestrian plaza where the traffic lane goes through that. And we're using several methods of traffic calming to address that. As you approach it, you would rise up on what's called a raised traffic table, which is a strategy that's used in a lot of downtown areas as a traffic calming device in front of crosswalks and things like that. And so there would be a slight rise up, and then the material would be changed from probably from the standard street pavement, which is concrete or asphalt, I'm not sure if that's been determined yet, onto a more decorative pavement that would have some texture. And you see the Texas flag pattern that would be in Texas flag colors with the star in the center. And I'll just go on and talk about the project north of that, and then we can go to the enlarged plan. And so north of that, it continues northbound. As you come off of that special area in the middle, the driving surface slopes back down, and you transition back onto standard street pavement there. There would be angled head-in parking on each side. The drive lane through that, as well as through the central area, is 14 feet wide. So it's plenty wide for if a car happens to be pulled over, that a fire truck or an ambulance can get around that. We've used that successfully in other cities to have that 14-foot lane, one-way lane. The lot that is on the west side of that north portion is currently a parking lot, and it's privately owned. And so we're envisioning here a driveway connecting into that. And over time, if that use changes, then those connections can be refined. That's the lot with the little pavilion on it. And then, of course, you go on north and connect to College. Could you go to the previous slide that would be a little more enlarged? So this is an enlarged view of that central area. You can see the central plaza has not only the special paving for traffic calming with the pattern and the texture, but it has barriers along each side of the traffic lane. The little dots that you see would be bollards, simple posts that would be impact-resistant. And then the long, dark bars you see would be solid seat walls with benches, as you see in the lower-left corner, with people facing in toward the plaza and on the upper side, out towards the sidewalk. And so on this drawing that you see on the screen, down where those little wire-looking things you see are four large trees with planting at each end of the plaza. And the plaza, while we don't show it here, would have tables and chairs and furnishings. And we would imagine that there might be some out on a day-to-day basis. And then when you have a festival, as you would do now, you might choose to close off the street, and the entire space could be used as a pedestrian space. And so it really has the ability to be a day-to-day with through traffic and special events where it would become, all of it would become a public space, a public pedestrian space. On the west side, which on this drawing is the top edge of the colored special paving, is a sidewalk that runs north-south along the west side of McCallan. And it connects, and this, I'll describe it, it's not quite as evident on the screen, but those four buildings along the west side all have a finished floor that is no three or three and a half feet above the street. And so what we're showing here is a common raised deck that would connect all of those stores. It would have a handrail landscaping in front of portions of that deck. And there would be steps, two sets of steps up to the deck and a ramp, allowing accessible, whether it's someone in a wheelchair or people with strollers or things like that. And then, once you're up on that three-foot-high deck platform, it would be essentially you're on private property then, but it would be, as we understand it with the EDC, as part of this project, funding part of the project, it would be built, we're envisioning, on private property with that common deck that would be an attractive wood-like, I'm saying wood-like, probably a composite material that would be durable over the long term, but it would be in character with those wood frame buildings and railings and things that would be in character also. We're imagining that the businesses might put out tables and chairs or displays for their particular businesses and all sorts of things. As businesses change over time, they would adapt to suit those businesses. So the project involves the public streetscape, but also what I'll call private development that would be up at the level of the stores. In the lower-left corner, I pointed out the photograph of the two women sitting on the bench that's mounted on a seat wall that would be part of the safety barriers along the drive lane. Just to the right of that, I'm not sure if you can, if the audience members can see it clear enough, but that's a section, a cross-section. Thank you, that'll help. A cross-section. We're looking south along Montgomery. And so you see the car in the drive lane. The little post is just a symbolic representation of a safety bollard. And then the sidewalk and a narrow planting area with a combination light standard that would have a streetlight height and a pedestrian light and banners that would fit in with the banner program that I believe you already have. And then you see the platform that the figure of the woman is on up at store level with the safety railing. And what you don't see in this is there is a ramp and a couple of sets of steps, so it is completely accessible. And so this is all visible. We believe that along with setting an appropriate speed limit, it would be safe. We've delineated the space for pedestrians versus cars. A comparison might be to city center in Houston, where there are kind of upgraded paver driveways, no curb, and so pedestrian spaces and the street itself have an attractive appearance. Maybe you could zoom back out, and I'll stop there and see if there are questions.
I have a quick question. The reason for the one-way street, originally the downtown master plan had a...
The reason for the one-way street was because, originally we had a loop, correct? On the south side of the pedestrian walkway, and the pedestrian walkway was completely closed off originally. Is that true? And so the north, the one-way street, originally we're going to do kind of a loop through the old Montgomery Steakhouse. Right. I just wanted to kind of remind everyone of that decision.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Yara, if you wanted to speak to that.
Sure. I think originally, initially before hitting the plaza on the south side of the pedestrian plaza, we wanted to use, the city wanted to get an easement or purchase a property at the steakhouse so that we could use loop the traffic through that, but that I think the city couldn't get a deal with the steakhouse. So we didn't want to drive or force the traffic or direct the traffic into the private property. That's the reason we made a decision of going all the way one-way.
I think the way that the city proposed that is not the way that you just described. So I think we can go back to the table and talk to the business owner and perhaps get what you just described. So that, I don't think that door is closed. Because I liked this, I liked how it looks like it would go through that parking lot. The only thing is, is it take away the parking that he has on the north side?
And if you go to the other, the overall drawing, that would help this conversation. So what we were describing is coming from Caroline, northbound, is that you would then turn right before you get to this central plaza, you know, on the street within the right-of-way. And then you would turn right and cut through the steakhouse parking lot. You're doing exactly right. And that's what the original desire was.
I do have kind of a question about that. Years ago, I've always talked about doing something with that particular road, but I've always been told how expensive it is. So how much is this going to cost?
Right now, the engineer's estimate for just the McCallan Street, we are looking about 1.5 million, estimated construction cost for that. And it also just...
Repeat that number one more time for me.
It is about 1.5 million.
Chris, have you seen these plans before? Did anybody on MEDC see these plans? This was the first I had seen it for this meeting.
I've seen it. We've presented before, too. So we've been through this probably twice, and that's why we made the decision to go with the one-way street. That was done at a previous meeting. That was when Dave McCorkedale said he reached out to the steakhouse owner. They couldn't get an agreement on the turn lane, so we went with this one, sorry, the turn street. So we went this one-way street. But if there's still opportunity to talk to that property owner, I think our Plan A, if that's still on the table, we should maybe revisit that.
Well, it was proposed for the trash can, the trash receptacle to be right there by the front door. And that's not desirable. But I think if we can come up with a plan, which what I'm working on that we talked about earlier, then I think that we can approach him again.
So we kind of need, it'd be helpful if you have someone to champion that, at least champion this, to work with the property owners before. Previously, Dave McCorkedale was kind of championing and coordinating with property owners, at least our understanding. So having someone who can pick that up and continue coordinating with the property owners, especially on like the raised deck, since it's all on private property, we're definitely going to need their buy-in. And I spoke to y'all, potentially doing like a profile, a vertical cross-section of those so that we can show them a picture of what that would look like. I think that would help facilitate discussion with them as well. But I think we would love to go back to doing a loop through that street if that's still an option.
Have all the business owners down there agree that they like that one-way street?
They haven't seen this. That's what I'm presenting tomorrow.
Okay, because I don't like it.
And I would mention that in the downtown plan that council approved a couple of years ago, there's some differences, but it's generally the same idea. And it shows, one of the illustrations shows a kind of a perspective artist's rendering of that raised deck. So that might be helpful in communicating to people.
Chris, a question for you. So there's the 1.5, that's just for everything above ground? You're not doing any subsurface work, right?
Yeah, it's just the surface, nothing underground, no utility improvements.
Yeah, so I know there's...
Including no drainage improvements in that?
We're probably going to add, make sure, raise the inlets, but no drainage improvements.
So Chris, can you maybe speak on what underground work needs to be done? Because we don't want to do all these really nice improvements when we know there's some work that needs to happen underground. So would you mind speaking to that?
Sure thing. So a couple of the projects that were on, the things that we're worried about underground, obviously water, sewer, and the drainage pipes. So for your sewer pipes that are underneath in that area, those have already been rehabilitated and/or replaced in the sections that needed it back a year and a half, two years ago. So sanitary sewer side is off the list. The second piece is the waterline portion, which I put, you have it sitting at your desk. This, if you look at the exhibit, obviously the scope of what was in this project is much further than this. So this cost estimate is for everything shown on the exhibit that can definitely be cut down to fit just McCallan. But this is kind of just the overall. And that is replacing all the waterlines. Right now, you have a mixture of four-inch and six-inch waterlines running through downtown. Most of the rest of your waterlines in the city are a minimum of eight-inch. And so we would recommend just replacing those. One, they're old, and two, upsizing, help with connectivity across. So, you know, as this continues to develop, my recommendation would be is that we'll change the scope that's shown on the exhibit in red. We would cut that down, just replace the portion today that's within, into the limits that makes sense. So go across Caroline Street, go across and probably over to Maiden, just to get out of the Plaza area, and then wait on the extents to get all the way up to Clepper and 105. That'll bring that cost down. And also, it would make more sense that as all this is getting ripped up, to just include it as one single construction contract. So you have, it's, they're digging it up, they're doing the work anyway, they lay in the new waterline, and then do it at one. So this estimate in front of you is everything on this exhibit. As a standalone project, there's obviously economy of scale and reducing the scope to bring this back down into the overall. But it's still, you know, by time, you set up temporary waterline, get everyone connected. And then we'll have to get with Aridura, back and forth on the drainage. We would recommend at least replacing the storm sewer in this section, because again, there's no reason to. And the city did a drainage study downtown, so all the sizing, the... the layout is complete. It's just more the placement of the inlets, which is also what is holding up the finalization of these plans. So once the downtown design is complete, then we will, you know, work hand-to-hand with Aradura and Kim Lee Horn to locate valves, hydrants, inlets as appropriate, so it works within the landscape they have.
So Chris, y'all do have a good drainage plan in place now.
Yes, there is a, again, it's been a couple of years, but a master drainage study was done of the downtown area, which reevaluated all the improvements downtown, where the lines are, line capacity, and recommended-
Because the Shockley property, it usually stands at about, yes, you know.
Correct. So it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't look to fix everything in this one, but at least take care of what's in this road, size correctly, so as the improvements continue, it can be continued on with it.
Will you approach, Mr. Longene, I'll give you the microphone. Thanks.
I just got a question about the loop going through the steakhouse. What's going to happen downstream from that on, oh, what's the, what's behind her?
On Maiden?
Yes. That street can't handle two-way traffic.
No, you are correct.
That street would have to be addressed also.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We've talked about that street. It's going to have to be in conjunction with this. I don't think it could stand alone by itself. Do this and not do something with Maiden.
Right, okay.
And the other thing is, too, I think you needed, because you're going to address the fact that the steakhouse is going to lose so many parking spots on that north side.
I just want to make sure that the door is open to have a good discussion with him. This doesn't have to be the final, but approach him in a different way that would be successful. And I think we can come up, and it may, you know, it might be, y'all have to come up maybe with a secondary plan for him, but let's see if we can sell this one and get his feedback for it and gain insight of what's concerning, probably the parking spots. And I know he doesn't want trash at his front, at his front door.
While we don't show any, oh, thank you. While we did not draw any parking spaces on this drawing because the steakhouse was kind of off the table at the time, it appears that there's enough width to have a one-way drive lane going east and some head-in parking spaces. So I would hope that the number of parking spaces could be pretty close to what's there now. And the original concept was looking at a dumpster at the, I'll just say, the lower-left corner of the, of the colored plaza area. So it could be in an enclosure, easily accessed by garbage trucks, and be accessible not only from the steakhouse and those stores, but also the stores across the street. That's certainly not finalized, but it was just something that was envisioned during the downtown plan.
Do you get, currently on that north side, he's got head-in parking, and so you're saying, although it's not denoted here, but it would still be possible to have those, or even if it's slanted, parallel parking, not parallel, but the slanted parking that you have?
Yeah, we would call that angled head-in parking.
Angled parking, sorry, I couldn't find the word, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
And how that's configured would need to be discussed with that owner and-
As long as there's an opportunity to discuss it, I think, and that, you recognize that that area could potentially be used for parking, that's enough to bring him to the table, I think.
And I, it's been a couple of years, but I believe the downtown, the exhibit of the downtown master plan shows something like that.
He wasn't the owner of the steakhouse then either, so that's changed as well.
So are those parking spots on the north side of the steakhouse his spots?
They are.
Okay. And he has put up bollards with a chain, so.
No comment. Thank you. I think, I appreciate y'all coming, I appreciate everybody getting on the same page. I feel like we've been very siloed in our works, and I'm glad that y'all are back up and running with us again. Our intent was to move forward, so I'm glad that we are finally doing so. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Anyone out there? Okay. So just real quick, so I'm clear. Our next steps with KKC is for February, the second meeting, to get those ordinances, those temporary ordinances in place, that's correct? At the second meeting of February? Great question. Twenty eighth, I don't know.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Yep.
And then we'll be providing you a schedule for each of the next deliverables-
Awesome.
Built around that date.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And then I heard, Jeremy, you say that February, that market, market analysis and strategic actions, and then April would be the strategic plan, the draft recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay. And then after that draft recommendation in April, then we can start rolling into implementation? And July, implementation would be the jumpstart, and we'll be starting with our second year with you as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And then Aradura, we will, I guess, from here, Chris, start looking at drainage or what, I can talk to the steakhouse owner and see if we can get him back to the table, and then gain feedback from the meeting I'm having tomorrow with downtown, to see what they think of this, and just making sure everybody's on the same page, and then we can start moving forward.
Correct. I think between our, kind of, a little bit of a pause on the Aradura folks until we have the conversation with the steakhouse, because that will change the direction, and then once that decision is made, I think the roping back in, the drainage component and the waterline component, which are put together, just bringing those pieces, that'll be affected by the overall change. And then as well as, you know, if the steakhouse is open, re-looking at Maiden and making sure that that's included, recommended improvements to Maiden in order to handle the increased traffic.
Well, and since we own 213 Prairie, it might make sense with this whole trash conversation, maybe we put a receptacle, a city-owned receptacle on that property, and they can just walk across Maiden to put, and we can have it all fenced off for us, and all the businesses that are on McAllen can walk one block over or bring a wagon one block over and put all of the trash there to get it off of that McAllen. If we're going to spend money making McAllen looking pretty, I definitely don't want green receptacles on it. I don't think anybody does. All right. With that, council inquiry. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming. I appreciate it, and I think we're heading on the right foot to facelift this town and get us set for success. With that, I will hear a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Fox? Second by Mr. Donaldson. It is 4:24, and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you again for attending.